I would like to order the stand for the political leaders.
Give me.
Political leaders to flag.
The United States of America and the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine of justice.
Thank you, everyone, coming to next. Um, is there any comments from the audience? Very none, we will move on to additions to the agenda. Um, please, we'd like to move the Peru trip up to C1.
Yes, please.
From F1.
Yes, please. No other additions, thank you. Senor, you're on, sir.
Appreciate it, um, I just wanted to present the trip to Peru to the Board of Ed. I've talked to.
Senior, could I ask, could you put.
I'm sorry, sure.
Could you see on TV, thank you.
Do I have to be on TV?
You have to, sir.
Um, so yeah, I wanted to present the trip to Peru to the Board of Ed for approval. I researched the trip to Peru and I think it would be a great opportunity for the students for a hands-on experience. Um, I wanted to explore possibilities other than Europe and something that has more hands-on experiences. Um, Peru looks like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to go, so I also provided a packet of information. I'll be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Could you also just talk about the insurance, please, please?
Yes, uh, we are going to have two types of insurance. We're gonna have the, um, curma insurance that the Board of Ed provides for trips, um, national and overseas, and also the EF insurance, which is the trip cancellation insurance, baggage insurance, and also medical insurance that covers a myriad of various expenses when you travel abroad. That will be mandated, and we've done it for the last three or four trips to Spain. Thankfully, nobody has had to use it, but I know the trouble is the first. Uh, but it has been, you know, a practice, common practice, so, you know, they also have a peace of mind insurance in case of an international event or anything that the trip needs to be moved or, uh, you know, delayed a few months, et cetera, et cetera. Different vouchers, options that the kids will have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for senior?
This is the first time you're doing Peru?
What is the cost of the trip?
Cost of the trip will be, um, it's a little higher than what the kids did for Spain right now. Spain was a little over three thousand one hundred last year. Uh, this time it's gonna be, uh, three thousand two hundred and eighty if they sign up within the next. They have like an incentive to sign up early because that way they can block the, uh, plane tickets, the hotel accommodations and everything. And that way, it kind of seems, even though people are gonna pay the same, kind of seems like a little better to do a couple hundred dollars a month for the next twelve, something fourteen months than, you know, senior just presented a trip three months ago, let's go to Peru now, give me three thousand bucks. So, a little bit more than Spain. I would say too that also, um, that includes lunch. So now the kids are gonna be full-time because in the past trips, lunch wasn't included. This time it's included, so now breakfast, lunch, dinner, accommodations, transportation, tickets to all the, uh, places that we're gonna visit in the trip. So only personal expenses for shopping and so on, and if they wanna eat extra whatever, not included.
Is there a minimum number of students required for the trip to take place?
Um, I would say, uh, I would do about six, I'd say, six to ten, minimum. We'll see, since this is the first time and so on, um, about six will be fine. My first trip with Bolton twenty-one years ago, it was with a class of these tables. I have four students going, I have three adults going with me too, so.
Yeah, he might have a lot of adults going on this trip. I'm just saying, looking at a crowd over there. I already told him, I don't know that he was thrilled with the idea, but I told him anyway.
Oh, he's thrilled.
He's worried about my shopping experience, I told him I could manage for a week without shopping.
Yeah, I thought that the Machu Picchu experience would be once in a lifetime.
Absolutely.
And, uh, I mean, how many times you gonna have the chance to go to their school to Machu Picchu, and the other, Cool School and so on.
And how long the trip is?
Nine days, eight nights.
Over school vacation?
Over school vacation, um, I'm asking for, I think it's Thursday, first day, Thursday or Friday. Um, hopefully to be back with one day so that they can get back into, to, to rest or so.
Any other questions?
Uh, do we have a motion on the floor to approve the Peru trip for 2021?
So. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes, enjoy.
Thank you.
Congrats, senior, thank you.
Um, move on to routine business items, um, approval minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of January ninth, 2020? Uh, is there a second?
Second.
We have any discussion? There are none, do the, um, all those in favor of approval minutes are January ninth, 2020?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes also. Moving along to Board of Ed committee reports, Kappa.
Um, so the full Kappa committee met on the twenty-ninth of January to discuss what we, the meeting, apparently we went through the detail of all of the items currently on the five-year plan. The new town administrator's created a form that has, kind of creates a lot more detail that you can look at and see what the details are for each of the, the mine items on the five-year plan. So most of the meeting was just simply going through that so we could all become familiar with everything, both for this coming year as well as the next few years. There was no specific discussion of this year's combined list and assigning any priorities or hierarchy to it yet. We are meeting on the nineteenth, and I believe that, that will be the topic of discussion at that time, to make a recommendation of sorting this year's capital requests and getting it first prioritizing it and then submitting it to the orders back for them to create. The final step meets the expectations of the budget, which won't be a lot of cuts.
Want to share about the high school bond that I brought up as well?
Do we?
Well, just that I made them aware.
Yeah, so there was discussion of that there was, um, some additional monies in the origi, in the bonds for the high school project that were not needed or spent at the time of the construction that, that are still available through the referendum, that the money was approved by the town to bond that much, the total, sum total amount of money. And not all of it was actually issued for bonding. I think it was, I mean, we don't know what the real breakdown is, but that as well as the returned money gets us somewhere in the range of six, six hundred thousand. So some of that six hundred forty-five thousand is money that has been, it's part of the rebate from the state, and some of it is available if the town decides to reallocate it to other projects or, um, yeah, I think it would have to go to a town meeting to, we wouldn't, we'd have access to some money that's already been approved to be bonded. It would just need a town meeting to reallocate it to other projects.
And I do believe that they are bringing information forward to our meeting next week.
Right.
With that information for discussion purposes.
They didn't have the detail they'll do, and, and what the, the rules and requirements for, for reallocating the money.
And I, they also are, were asked to go back and determine, uh, remaining Kappa monies in all of the remaining previous projects.
Right, so that's, that's something that every couple of years is done to, for, for projects that were approved and have some leftover money. Again, that goes to a town meeting for reallocation. So we're gonna get accounting of how much is available for that purpose as well.
Thank you. Curriculum, do we, oh, Sue's not here.
Kristen's there.
Curriculum did meet on February fourth. Um, we discussed proposed astronomy, new astronomy textbook, um, to replace one that's quite old and out of date, and also discussed a possible new grade nine science textbook. We'll look to try to bring those forward to the board. Not sure if it'll be next month or the month after.
Yeah, I don't know if it's March or April, one of the other.
Yeah. But, uh, funds for those textbooks should, should be able to come out of choice monies.
Thank you. Finance?
Um, finance met this morning, um, and while we have our budget discussion, we'll go through these numbers in greater detail. To be highlighted are some of the transfers that happened, um, in the last month. So those are all highlighted on the right-hand side of your pages. Kristen, did you want to go through them?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So, uh, you will see, uh, under regular instruction, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars were transferred, uh, from building to cover supplies for English language arts that were needed. Fifteen hundred dollars from buildings for text for world language. These were replacement texts, not a new textbook. Seven hundred ninety-four dollars transferred from buildings for text for mathematics, uh, again, replacement of texts, uh, and three hundred and twenty-five dollars from buildings for supplies for health and physical education. Then moving down to student support services, uh, we had a transfer, uh, to guidance, um, for Naviance software for Bolton Center School, which is to, uh, ensure that we have, uh, planning for our middle school students like we do for secondary and beyond school planning for our high school students. We already have Naviance at the high school, so it was an add, but it is something that legally we're supposed to be doing statutorily, and we definitely, uh, need to be doing it. Um, so, uh, we worked, that did a great job working with Naviance to get the price down. Um, and that, that money was transferred, um, from ESY, uh, summer school. You will see that, uh, we have a savings, uh, in, uh, summer school transportation, and currently the state is projecting a reimbursement of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars, uh, for excess costs. Going on to the next page. Oops. Uh, you'll see savings, uh, for, regarding negative renewal increase for our workers' compensation and liability that we've actualized. You'll see there where the transfers came from, and you also see a four thousand two hundred and forty-four dollar transfer from systems, uh, for replacement desktops, uh, at Bolton Center School in the office. We were, they're old, and we're having a lot of issues, and those computers need to be running and operational at all times. Uh, we have, uh, projected savings, uh, in paper and copier rental. Cassal and I are in the process of, uh, meeting with various copier companies. We own our current copier, it's not doing so well, it's, it's, it's on its last leg, ready to go to, um, copier graveyard, but in the meantime, we're not paying anything on it, so, uh, we have some savings there. We hope to have new copiers before the end of this year, this fiscal year though. Um, and then you can see the transfer that was done out of systems for those, uh, needed desktops at Center School. We have, uh, projected electricity savings of eleven thousand dollars and savings on, uh, technical high school transportation. We have a savings, uh, in salaries, uh, which is due to staffing changes, uh, which we have made mention of throughout the course of this year so far. Vacancy hires and contract negotiation savings. And then we have a current net savings, a result in insurance changes of ninety thousand dollars. Uh, we currently are, uh, anticipating a hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and four, um, projected balance that we are currently not using, that's in savings. Um, and then if you go on to the final page, um, you will see, well, I'm sorry, on that other page, you will see that we are currently fifty-two percent expended. And then we are, uh, also, uh, requesting a transfer request of a total of twenty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars to upgrade our server equipment and our malware subscription and license and support, specifically transferring eleven thousand four hundred from fiscal and twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-one from school insurance. Uh, our server has, uh, reached its capacity and then some, and we are experiencing technical difficulties because of that. Our malware, um, license and servicing will be up in May because it's a May renewal, how that particular renewal works. And, um, this is malware that I think a lot of districts had, including CREC, over the summer. CREC improved their malware, uh, to a much better product to handle the constant barrage that we are getting to try to infiltrate our systems. Um, and they have had about six months with it now and feel very confident in their recommendation to us that a move to this new malware is exactly what we should do to better protect our district's systems. Uh, so I am respectfully requesting this transfer so that we can get a new server set up, possibly over April vacation if we can get it all together in time, um, and then get the new malware on there so that come May, we're not renewing with the old one to pay money only to change to a new one. So we'll need a motion. Yes, unless there's any questions.
If there's that question, we can do it before or after the motion, but, um, the, the twenty-four thousand dollar transfer, that's after the hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar projected credit?
That will decrease it.
That will decrease the hundred and sixty-one thousand, yes.
It's already accounted for.
Correct, it's not already accounted for now.
You ready for motion? You can write it or don't you?
Uh, if you want to, I.
You should have it right there.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the transfers recommended by the superintendent in the January budget status.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion? I'd just like to note that going forward, this is how we're going to be reviewing the, um, budget status. It was brought to our attention that our policy indicates that we should be approving transfers of any amount, and, um, I think it'll help keep us all a little more in touch with how the budget works and how things change throughout the year. So, can look forward to doing this monthly, but, um, is there any more discussion? Uh, if not, then all those in favor of approving the transfers?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously.
I would also, uh, just like to add that we are gonna change our format a little bit, since the Board of Finance Chair is here this evening. In terms of what you are receiving for an update, it will include the column with all of the, the ins and outs of transfers, um, and you will also be receiving a memo about, you know, these transfers that are over the ten thousand dollars. So I guess at some point we'll have to have a conversation about, is that really needed anymore or not? And I'm fine with it either way, you're getting it this time around, and then we can, I guess, decide from there. So hopefully this will be, um, more informative for the Board of Finance as well.
I appreciate, uh, the additional information, I think it'll be helpful.
Agreed, thank you.
All right, uh, Personnel Committee did meet, uh, to discuss the unaffiliated terms of employment, and we will be discussing that in the executive session and likely moving on it later. Community meeting reports, is there any this month?
PTA met this month, um, however, their meeting was a little different, they didn't, you know, have their usual back and forth. What they did was have a speaker, or two speakers rather, sisters, who presented a wonderful, um, presentation, um, mostly about special ed and how their experiences with their own children, um, and some recommendations for parents and, um, members of the, of the community. Mr. Giard was there, and I think it was, um, a really good presentation.
Yes, several community meeting reports. I attended the CREC council meeting on January fifteenth. At the meeting, we received CREC's fiscal year nineteen financial report, which contains several fascinating statistical tables, uh, comparing the thirty-six CREC districts. Uh, I learned, for example, that Bolton in FY nineteen was responsible for zero point zero five percent of CREC's overall budget. As a group, the member boards contributed twenty-two point four percent. The vast majority of CREC's budget comes from the state, uh, federal, non-member boards and other agencies. Uh, the financial report also contained data on per people expenditures per district, and since FY twenty-ten, Bolton's per people expense has consistently been between a hundred and six and a hundred and ten percent of the aver, of the group average. However, our growth rate for pupil, for per pupil expenditures has been slightly below average, um, thirty-three point one percent compared to a mean growth rate of thirty-three point nine percent. Among the thirty-six towns, New Britain had the lowest growth rate at ten point two percent, and East Windsor had the highest at seventy-two point nine. I attended the Bolton Scholarship Fund meeting on January fifteenth. BSF scholarship applications went live on the BSF website a few days before that. Application deadline for current high school students is May fifth, twenty-twenty, and the deadline for students already in college or graduate school is April twenty-eighth. Scholarship fund is also in the middle of our fundraising season. Peel letters have gone out to town residents, and the annual phone-a-thon with help from Bolton High School. National Honor Society students will take place on February twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and March first. And then lastly, uh, yesterday, Anne and I attended the public hearing that the Charter Revision Commission held. I spoke as a citizen, not as a Board of Ed member, um, but I did advocate for several changes that could affect the Board of Ed. Specifically, I asked that the Commission take a look at Kappa and expand the sorts of purchases that can be included under Kappa, um, to include such things as bulk purchases of computers, which we tried to do before and been turned down under Kappa. And, and also that they consider requiring the Kappa, um, spending on town and Board of Ed projects to be proportionate to the size of each body's budget. So, since the Board of Ed budget is typically sixty-five to seventy percent of the overall town budget, why isn't Kappa expenditures similarly proportioned? Finally, I asked the Commission to amend the language governing election of officers by elected boards and commissions. The current language in the Charter conflicts with state statutes governing the operation of boards of education. So hopefully they can take a look at that and make sure that things are harmonized. At the end of the meeting, the Commission agreed to send representatives to meet with the Board of Education in order to solicit our input into the process of revising the Charter. So hopefully they'll be reaching out to Andrew and Kristen to set something up. But I would also encourage anyone who has slots on the Charter to try to attend one of their meetings or send written comments to the Chair. Quinn Marion is the Chair. Attending the meetings might be a little tough because they've scheduled most of them for the second Thursday of the month, but either as it may. And then just lastly, I'd like to congratulate the cast of the Addams Family, as well as Jen Carvalho and Abby Sacco for putting on a fantastic performance last week. My daughter had been very reluctant to attend, we finally convinced her to come along, and after the show, she was so enthusiastic and was saying that it was better than some professional theater performances she's seen.
Agreed. Thank you for that, that was great.
Do you have any other community meeting reports? I know we did Kappa earlier. If you don't have any, then we'll turn things over to Superintendent for the Superintendent of Schools' report.
Could I get the lights lowered a wee bit, please? Thank you. Um, I believe you have in your pocket, uh, a copy of tonight's presentation in front of you. So, uh, on the screen, please find, uh, my recommended budget for twenty, 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 twenty-one. And you see up there our happy portrait of a graduate visual, and, uh, we are continuing to work and refine our new vision statement, which we hope to bring forward to you. What you see on the bottom there is our latest iteration, although we're having a little discussion about one more iteration after feedback that came from parents when the parent group met with Wild Kurtman, so we're, we're working on that. But we believe that the Bolton Public Schools empowers all students to embrace learning, build knowledge, develop skills, and become engaged global citizens. The belief statements, uh, that are part of our current strategic plan are there in terms of what, as a, uh, Board of Education and staff, we believe. And I believe that the budget that the administrator's staff and I are putting forward to you this evening encompasses those belief statements. We are still operating, this is our last year of our twenty-fifteen, twenty-twenty strategic plan, and our priorities continue to include maintaining Bolton Public Schools as a high-performing school district, focus on instructional improvement, student outcomes, professional learning, digital literacy, and technology improvements. The proposed budget for twenty, twenty, twenty-one is a budget of fourteen million eight hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and five dollars, which is a three point six eight percent increase. You will see in the graphic there that regular instruction encompasses one point eight percent of this budget. Student support services or special education encompasses two point seven percent. Administration and Business Services, four point three percent. Operations and Services, seven percent. Salaries, sixty-five point two percent. And benefits, nineteen percent. Here is the distribution of that increase in actual dollars, and you will see our salary increase of a hundred and seventy-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. Our benefits increase of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, and that is driven by our current nineteen point five percent insurance, not to exceed increase. I am hopeful that next week, when we meet again to discuss budget, that I will have a better number to share with you. We have our next CT chip board meeting is next Wednesday, and we, the expectation is that Signor will be bringing to our collective group, uh, new information after they have had an opportunity to review the January claims. A reduction of forty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars in special education, a reduction in administration and business support of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. Regular instruction is up fifty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, and operations and services, fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. For projected revenues, we are projecting two hundred and eleven eight hundred and forty-four dollars in federal grants, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars in state grants, nineteen hundred dollars for the Erase Grant with total projected grant awards of six hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. I want to remind the Board that choice monies are what Bolton Board of Education uses to pay tuition for our Bolton students who attend magnet schools and agricultural schools. for our Bolton students who attend magnet schools and agricultural schools, and our total for next year is projected to be $102,000 for that. On the screen there, you see our capital proposals, which you approved, I believe, at the December meeting for our Kappa items. And you can see that they are there in two groups because, to be honest, we really weren't sure what to do with the tennis courts and the soccer fields, but we felt it was important that we keep it on everybody's radar screen. And those were included in our discussion at our Kappa meeting last week. Here is a graphic of our enrollment for the last three years. And we anticipate seeing steady enrollment at our elementary school, just up slightly at the middle school, as well as the high school. In this graphic, it shows you Columbia enrollment and our projected numbers for 2020, 2021. And we are projecting 51 students. You will see in the graphic on the right-hand side that the current enrollment for 8th grade at Horace Porter School is the lowest that we've seen in a very long time, which is why we are only projecting 10 students for grade 9 for next year based on the small number of students they have in their current 8th grade class. You'll see there that the tuition is $12,646.66, and below is how it is separated out for the general fund and the Bolton High School bond, which totals $644,980. Budget highlights. This budget includes a reduction of one teaching position at Center School. It is not a teacher losing their job, but rather through retirements and so moving around. We are looking right now. Our proposal is for two sections of first grade for next year. In the end, it may be two sections of kindergarten. Right now, we're rejecting three sections, but we need to wait for kindergarten registration to happen to see where that falls. With the addition of two new paraprofessionals to meet the needs of special education students. And I want to call to the board's attention that this is in order to keep our students in district and program appropriately for them here and to meet their needs. And where students need to be outplaced, we're looking somewhere in the range of $150,000 to $200,000 per student versus approximately $55,000 to $60,000 between salaries and benefits for one paraprofessional. We are looking to offer a new Bolton High School course, Probability and Statistics. We are continuing our partnership with E-Camp, which is our early college advanced manufacturing pathway between Bolton, Coventry, Vernon, and Goodwin College. Mr. Miselli and Mr. Jean-Sante, guidance counselor from the high school, and I had a meeting a few weeks ago with members of the Goodwin College team because we are also looking at additional potential pathways, including possibly nursing. Whether that be for next year or not, we're not sure, but I'm trying to open up the doors to examine as many pathways as possible. I did arrange for Commissioner Cardona to come to Goodwin College with all of us present yesterday. And we had a wonderful afternoon with the commissioner where he saw firsthand our students working in a lab and doing a lot of great hands-on activities, as well as the impressive partnership that we have developed and a pathway that is unique and important since there are 33,000 unfilled manufacturing jobs a month in Connecticut. We continue to have a shared service partnership with EastCon with our food service director and our website and student data privacy technology support. We continue to have a shared service partnership with the town of Bolton for the director of facilities and for our technology specialist. We are one of the founding members of CT CHIP, and I am the chair, which is our Connecticut collaborative health insurance program. And we have solidified a new 10-year contract with Columbia. We have numerous achievements to be proud of, I think, for the outstanding job that our staff, students, and administrators do. Bolton High School was just named to the 2019 AP Honor Roll. Bolton High School just received the 2019 AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. Bolton High School, you may know, was named a National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence. Just saying. We have updated curricula in all subject areas. We rolled out K-5 Ready Math this year, and our teachers are really having a great experience with it, and as are our students. We have brought to life Atlas Rubicon, our curriculum mapping online software in all grades. We have a new Bolton Public Schools website. We have numerous electives for very minimal cost at Bolton High School, and we continue, as I shared, to look at other potential pathways. We have a host of student achievements. I'm not going to read them all, and they're not all there, but I ran out of a lot of room. So I shared a few in this presentation for you. And I think we need to be very proud of the achievements that our students earn here in Bolton because they're pretty amazing. In addition, as part of our continuing effort in this strategic plan is an update on our digital literacy and technology accomplishments, which we continue to be part of. And at this point, we are on track with our Bolton Public Schools Technology Replacement Plan, which has been a yeoman's effort on behalf of staff and this board, and we are very appreciative of that. And I'd like to see us stay on track with that. We have numerous athletic achievements as well that we continue to be very proud of and continue to rack up athletic accomplishments. This budget focuses on the future. It is, in the coming year, we will be developing and rolling out our new strategic plan, which will guide the work of teaching and learning, continue to focus on maintaining Bolton Public Schools as a high-performing district. We'll be looking to integrate the transferable skills at all grade levels, support teacher leadership and curriculum development, provide job-embedded professional learning, and empower all students to embrace learning, build knowledge, develop skills, and become engaged global citizens. Just a reminder of our budget schedule. This evening, we will move to the Board of Ed conference room for 7:30 start for our budget workshop. We have another one scheduled for next Thursday, and if needed, we will have one on Thursday, the 27th. And we have to have our budget to the Board of Finance by charter by March 15th. In an ideal world, I'd like to get it to them by the end of February or by March 1st at the latest because we are scheduled, I believe, for March 19th to present the board's budget to the Board of Finance. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to unfinished business. Policies, the second read of 40112.8, employment of family members. Do you want to address changes that we may have made or not made?
Sure. So coming up for a second read is a revision of the board's nepotism policy. It was first presented to the board in December 2019. There was some discussion at the time, and board members requested that the policy committee take a second look. Superintendent Hecth then worked on a new version with the board's attorney, shared that with the policy committee, and Sue and I approved the new language. And so we would recommend that the version presented today be adopted. The prior version would have prohibited immediate family of Board of Ed members from being hired by the district. The new version simply requires that Board of Ed members inform the chair or superintendent of existing familiar relationships with board employees and notify the superintendent if they become aware that a family member is applying or has applied for a district position. Furthermore, the policy directs Board of Ed members to abstain from any vote that would directly affect a family member.
Thank you for that. Do we have a motion to approve the second read of Policy 40112.8, employment of family members, as recommended by the policy committee?
I will read that motion.
Is there a second? Do we have any further discussion on that matter?
I'd just like to thank the policy committee for revisiting this. I think this is very well worded, actually.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of approving Policy 40112.8, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Glad we have clarity on this.
So are we.
Moving on to new business. We covered F1. F2 is the VHS 2020 graduation date.
So this past summer, you may recall that there was new statutory language that allowed Boards of Ed to set a high school graduation date well in advance of how we used to do things. I was hesitant to simply do that right out the gate, as were a few others, and yet there were others that did it straight away. For us, we don't have an outside venue that we have to secure in order to have graduation. We have graduation here on our premises, which was one of the reasons why I wanted to see how some of this played out. And we were getting some conflicting information from attorneys in terms of how they were interpreting this new law. So having said that, after conferring again with our attorneys, and I think a lot of work on their end on behalf of numerous districts, I'm bringing this forward to you tonight. And the statute reads that you can set graduation date for the 180th day of school. If we had set this back in September or October, we would have been looking at June 9th or 10th. Currently now, the 180th day of school for the Bolton Public Schools will be Monday, the 15th of June. So it is my recommendation that the board set the Bolton High School graduation date for Monday, the 15th of June. I have had some calls for some parents. They'd love to be able to solidify people coming from out of state and flying in. And I think also, you know, sticking with the statute for the 180th day and the 15th does happen to be a Monday, so that helps people out too, I think, in terms of flying in over the weekend. So that's my recommendation. I'll be looking for a motion.
Do we have a, do we have a motion to set Monday, June 15th, 2020, which is the current 180th day of school as the date for the Bolton High School graduation?
So.
Is there a second?
One second.
Is there any discussion on this?
I have a question.
So what happens if winter suddenly returns and we have five more snow days?
Mr. Miselli?
So we'll adjust. The senior programming is always a little bit shorter, a hundred percent anyway, because of the exam schedule and rehearsal days. So we'll know well in advance, and teachers can just adjust for that. They will, still, their last day of school will be on the 15th, but they are more than welcome to come back to school after that, if they wish. We'll do something with that.
But we would still hold graduation on the 15th?
So it's on a date that you set tonight will be the date of graduation regardless of what happens with snow days moving forward from here? Correct?
So the rest of the school's grades would continue potentially past the 15th?
Yes. Correct.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? I'd just like to say I had the same concern or question about how this. I think at this point, we're safer than we would. I appreciate that we did not try and set a graduation date in the fall. I think that is foolish. I understand that people will want to plan and book venues, but, you know, waiting until at least February allows us to know a better lay of the land. You know, the voluntary post-graduation school days are... That's a fun concept. Okay. All those in favor of setting the graduation date as June 15th?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes. We will be graduating June 15th.
And Mr. Miselli will be signing out a communication to all families tomorrow. He's doing it right now, actually.
All right.
Even better, Mr. Miselli.
Glad everyone said that. So is there a question? Moving forward, are we going to, as a board, or is the superintendent going to pick a date that this is going to happen in the future? We're allowed to do it at the beginning of school, but are we putting it as a policy to have that?
I mean, I'd like to see us do it at either the January or February meeting to the points that were raised here. I just don't know how much pushback or not we will get from the community. So I think people that have reached out to me... What's that? Well, before, we waited till April, exactly. So I think we shoot for January, February, and maybe judge it based on, by the time we get to the January board meeting, how many snow days have we already had? And, you know, what maybe projected forecast may look like.
So it's not our intention to do it sooner?
It's not my intention to do it sooner.
There's not even a law that says you're required to.
Correct. We're not required to. And I just think that Mr. Miselli and I are on the same page with that we think this is a better plan. Especially since we graduate here. And there's, right?
Especially far earlier.
No, I know you're not. But there's also, I think, if we do it January or February, I think, I'm not 100% certain, but I think it still gives the parents who are in charge of operation graduation an opportunity to solidify with all their vendors who come in. I still think there's time, right? It's not too late at that point, correct?
Much better to know now than it would be in April when we used to do it. Usually scrambling to.
Correct. So does that work for everybody?
So this is an happy medium?
Yeah.
You don't necessarily need to wait, but too early is too early.
Agreed.
So the next one is the budget update, but we've already handled that under Finance.
The possible action is referencing the transfer approval?
Correct.
F4 resignations?
I'd like to inform the board that Tom Demoral, Bolton High School science teacher, has tendered his resignation, and he will be moving and leaving at the end of the 2019-2020 school year. That is a great loss for Bolton, and he will be greatly missed.
Do we have any future business? And at this point, we'll be asking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss terms of employment for unaffiliated employees for 2021, as well as school safety and security, and also to ask that we invite the superintendent in.
Second.
All those in favor of going into executive session? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Now they breathe into executive session, come out, vote, and move on to our next meeting.